All right. Hi, welcome to the April meeting of the Swampscut zoning Board of Appeals. The first item on our agenda is to approve past minutes. Did we have?
I'll defer those to next month.
Okay, I'll defer that to next month. All right, so we'll move forward with petition 2501. I'm gonna constitute the board as everyone except for Susan. Two of us watched the video from the last meeting, so we're all up to date.
How are you doing? Could you move? I'm just thinking maybe keep everybody on until it's time to consult the board later in case some conflict or anything did develop during the hearing. Right, did everybody watch?
Yeah. I think it's, I don't think I'm just gonna keep it as everyone except for Susan.
Okay.
There's no sort of who, where someone's leaning from the conversation.
That's, that's, that's fine.
Disrupting, yeah.
Okay.
This way, it's before the conversation happens. Since all three of us were the ones to watch the, watch it on video. All right. So, we have the petitioner here. Hi. From the last meeting, the question was, did you have the original building permit? Did you?
Yes.
So is that something that you've submitted? I didn't see it on the file.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they put it in, but I just put it with somebody that put a, uh, uh, closed, uh, petition.
Okay. Okay. I'm just gonna see if Marissa has it.
Science fair.
Yeah. Exciting.
It's a big day.
So, do we, did we get that building permit?
Did we get the building permit?
Yeah.
What do you mean?
Like, was it, he said he submitted the burnt, the building permit?
I can pull it up.
Oh, do you have it? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was the only thing that was kind of missing from last meeting. Give me one second. Okay. So... There was two, so there's one for a deck, which is currently on hold, and then this is the one, it was submitted January 25th, 2024. So this one, remodel basement, seven foot six inch villainous ceiling height, add bathroom basement, remodel bathroom, second floor, add approximately six feet to enclosed mudroom, replace existing windows. So this is all of the information, really, there are no attachments in the file. The permit was issued, it says inspections are ongoing. So it does, it does mention that he's adding on to that space. Yep. Yeah, so enough, that was approved by the building inspector. The building commissioner. Let me tell you who issued it. John Jackson. I don't know. If it was January 2024, I would imagine that it was probably Steve Cummings. Yeah. I had to guess. There, we don't, oh, John Jackson is the applicant, that's what it is, right here. I can tell you... It doesn't say, oh, Steven Cummings, Steve Cummings approved approval, step building department review, so. So it was Steve Cummings that issued the permit, our former commissioner. Um... All right, does anybody on the board have further questions from, that weren't answered last meeting, or further research? I know we had new pictures that Tony sent us. Anybody have any? Does the petitioner have anything to add to last meeting?
Now, if you watched the, the videos, that's all right to say.
Is anybody else here to speak on that petition?
Yes, um, one...
Hold on, let me get it. Hi, Steve Gedman. I abut the property. My fence is actually only 12 feet from, from my house. The permit that is online, on record, I spoke to the former builder inspector about that, 'cause I did see it, but he said that he was supposed to submit plans before he went ahead and build anything. He never submitted plans to go ahead and build that, and he didn't know that he was gonna put that up. And then when he came to the house, he came out to the house to look, and he was shocked when he saw that, the size of it, that, 'cause he had no plans for it. And then when the plans were submitted, some of the measurements were wrong on the plan. And even if he submitted a plan to begin with, being that close, it should've went for a special permit, and we should've had this meeting before he even put the building up.
Before his...
That, that piece up. It's like I said before, I mean, I know you've watched the video, so I don't want to repeat anything that, but we feel closed in, in our own backyard. It's like looking up at a wall. I, I don't know what to say. That I didn't already say. Except we do, like I said, we do feel closed in in our own backyard, and we feel trapped back there.
All right, my understanding of this is that it does fall under the BAlta. I think where, my feeling is that this is continuing a non, you know, pre-existing nonconformity, and that it is also, but it is not more non-conforming than the pre-existing nonconformity, in fact, it's less nonconforming as it recedes away from the property line as the first sort of checkpoint for the BAlta. Does anybody else on the board have thoughts about that?
I have some thoughts. I see it as clearly BAlta, that it's a pre-existing nonconforming structure, that the side yard setback is nonconforming with a zero setback. It's protected under 48.6, and the first question under BAlta is the work increasing the nonconforming nature of any nonconformity, and because it's not bringing it, it can't possibly increase it beyond zero without encroaching on the neighbor's yard physically. So if the answer is no, then the next analysis is the step two, which is making a finding that it does not increase the nonconforming nature of the existing nonconformity. If, if the answer was yes, that it was increasing the nonconforming nature, then you would get to a special, a section six special permit analysis about whether it's more detrimental to the neighborhood, but I, I think unless you can find that the, the work is increasing the nonconforming nature, we don't get to that analysis, so I see it too.
So you just say our hands are tied, really, whether you like it or you don't like it, your hands are tied.
I, I think hands are tied.
Yeah, we don't have jurisdiction, because BAlta makes it clear that if there's a pre-existing nonconformity and you're continuing that, I mean, if this house was angled differently towards the lot, it would be even more, it would be even closer. But because it's angled away, it's actually, you know, slowly becoming nonconforming.
Right.
I mean, less nonconforming.
Right, if it was running parallel, and it went in any, just an inch more into the side yard, then I think it would trigger that second step, but I, I don't think it does. Does anybody see that first question differently on the board? That it is increasing the nonconforming nature in any way?
And it's only that, that small section that they need to relieve.
It's the red, the red's no.
But not even, because the majority of the red is conforming.
Okay.
Right, it's conforming.
It's only that one little section that is technically not, it's really, I mean, they could build, the majority of this they could build as a right.
It would be a conforming addition.
It's a conforming addition, it's that one little section that's nonconforming, the majority of the addition is.
So do you, do you place solemnity as a penalty, because it really should've been discussed before it was built, and talk to the neighbor who's supremely offended? Is there any mitigation, 'cause you built this bef, you shouldn't have been building this, we should be having this discussion with it not built, to, or do we just fold our tent and say, look, there's nothing we can do? Or do we ask him, is there some mitigation policies?
I, I understand mitigation, my thought on it is, the building inspector issued a cease and desist, because it wasn't, you know, he said, didn't get his plans or wanted to come here. But I don't know that we have, do I think that would be the equitable and fair thing to do, to have some type of mitigation? Absolutely, but I don't know that that's our role, quite frankly.
Okay.
My thought, just one voice.
And, I mean, could we have this, that the, the plans do need to be submitted as part of the record for this, for this building permit, before work begin, before work continues?
Yeah, that, that...
I mean, I know this is part of our, but there's, this isn't, these are plans, this is just...
Isn't that the building inspector's jurisdiction, not our jurisdiction? It's not for us to say.
Right, it should be conforming plans.
Except that he did put the, he put the hold because it wasn't submitted, and then it came to us. So if we allow it without his approval of the plans, we could allow it pending that everything's properly submitted to the building inspector.
Well, that's how we allow everyone, you know, every, everybody comes here.
Yeah, I guess, but except that this, I guess because this, because this permit is already in existence, and he physically has it, verse...
Right.
Verse a permit that isn't, hasn't been pulled yet and hasn't been, right? I mean, he has a permit.
Yeah.
But we...
Thank you.
So you're talking about the, when first applied for the permit, we had Steve, who's approved it, and the contractor filled all the, the requestment plans on it on the time. So Steve told me that to get, move ahead, we have to have survey done, drawing with all the measurements, and go for a special permit. So that's what I thought we're gonna do in here, and I, I'm not sure if he, in decades, guys have to go back on him, on him, and ask again for approval? Do I have to submit all these plans to him first before I come back in here? That's what you're talking about?
Yeah, well typically what would happen is you would apply for the permit, the building inspector would not issue a permit, they would say, they would look at what you have, like your plans, that they, if you didn't submit plans, they'd ask you to submit them, and they could submit them all, and then they would review it, and if they thought it needed a special permit, they would send you here before ever issuing a building permit. But you have a building permit that was issued without this step.
Right.
So I guess we're trying to just clarify where the paperwork should be between here, that we have this plot plan now, but the building inspector, it's not part of the building permit, and there are no, we still don't have plans for the work, we only have the plot plan, we don't have drawings or plans.
Right.
And because there's the roof change, there are other changes that the building inspector might wanna see, and should have the opportunity to review.
But can we make our finding subject to finding that it's not increased the nonconforming nature of the existing nonconformity, and conditioned upon any required documents or plans that the building inspector requires as part of his permit process being submitted?
Yeah, that's what I would wanna do, only because he has a, he has a permit but doesn't have all that submitted. Does anybody else have any, any questions or concerns?
Is, is whatever these plans show, will they have the ability, excuse me, to impact the decision?
I guess from the building inspector's point of view, yes, but not from the encroachment point of view, from the special permit for the encroachment. But if the building inspector sees something in the plans that weren't properly represented to us, or that were, that are somehow different and create a new nonconformity...
Do we wanna know that before we approve this permit? Does that matter?
I, I think we're okay, because we're gonna include as part of the decision, reference to Hancock Plan, that shows the dimensions, and our issues are really dimensional.
Okay, okay, thank you. Does anybody wanna make that motion? Intingent on, on you filing any requests with the...
I'll, I'll make a motion on it. I'll make a motion on petition 2501, 44 New Ocean Street, to make a finding that the property has an existing nonconformity, and that the proposed work, the work that has been completed, or also the proposed work is shown on the Hancock survey dated 11/5/24, does not increase the nonconforming nature of the existing nonconformity consistent with the BAlta case, BAlta case, and conditioned upon the petitioner submitting any plans or drawings that the building inspector requires to fulfill his duties and the requirements under the building code and our zoning bylaw.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have to vote on this one?
Yes.
We have to have all of them?
Yep.
Yeah, aye.
All right, so you have your relief, but it is, it is conditioned on meeting with the building inspector and getting all the proper paperwork submitted to the building inspector for final review.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
All right. So, we're moving on to petition 2503. Are you here to speak on that petition?
What's your name on it, sorry?
Um, Arthur Sims? All right.
Just, if you wanna grab that mic that's right behind you, that way.
Yeah. There you go.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome. If you'd like to run through your petition for us?
Essentially, we'd like to put an addition on that is gonna be within the 7.5 foot setback, as the, well, first of all, the lot is kind of a odd shape, it's more of a triangle than a square shape, and the main house and the garage are not square to each other, which is causing us a few design problems. The existing garage, a corner of it is actually, I believe it says 5.8 feet or 5.6 feet from the property line, and we would like to keep that 5.8, or whatever it is.
5.9.
5.9, and stay the same distance from the, you know, 5.9 feet all the way down for the addition. And we're asking, seeking relief to do that, if we need relief.
So wouldn't that require a variance of one tenth of a foot?
Well, it's a similar situation, because it's already...
5.9.
It's already 5.9, yeah, so it's similar in the sense that we're, we're falling into the...
That's like, that case has taken off.
It's taken over the, just the...
Every special permit.
Every special permit, yeah.
Yeah, I'm nonconforming, so I just can, as long as I don't go outside my nonconformity.
Yeah.
I can build all over the lot.
Yeah, I mean, an argument could be made that putting more building in that, I mean, the other one was unique in the sense that it was going away from it, so it was actually becoming less nonconforming as it went back, and this one, an argument could be made that you are putting more bulk of building in that setback, and therefore are you, like, creating more nonconformity by putting more bulk in that space, whereas the other one, you were kind of, it was going away from the, it was angling away, but it can be, it seemed, it just, it's, there's a little bit of interpretation, but I think that...
Yeah, I think it, because we had it on Bellevue, we had it on Middlesex, and we asked the question of Robin, and she came back on both saying, if it, that, that, 'cause I thought the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
You're adding more mass, but I was wrong.
Yeah.
So, there's no discussion?
I can say a few things. We've, we've looked at several options here. Without going into that setback, and our feeling is that the best for the neighborhood, I think, and for the neighbors, would be expanding into that within the 7.5 foot setback, as opposed to extending further back into the, into the exist, into the buildable zone, so to speak, I don't know, how do you wanna phrase it? Again, we've looked at numerous different options, I think this would be the best for the neighbors, and I would think they would agree from what little we've talked to them, as far as sightlines and all that are concerned.
Right, 'cause the alternative is going back further.
Yeah, and you don't have a rear yard setback, you're only aside.
The interesting thing is, he's keeping the five foot nine, but there's a crook in the, in the building wall, so that his five foot nine is parallel, it's not like he's shooting that line straight, and it would be then making a five foot nine, less than five foot nine, he's saying, okay, I got five foot nine over here.
Yep.
So I'll stick with my five foot nine, it gives me a little connage in my wall, so to speak.
Yeah, that, that wall won't be totally straight, it's gonna have a ever so slight angle.
Yep, yep.
And we don't have anything to say, so...
Well, and if it was straight, yeah, you wouldn't be able to do it, 'cause then it would be encroaching more into the sideline.
And why is, I guess why can't the argument be made that it's creating more of a nonconformity? You said that there's a precedent that...
Yeah, it's just because of precedent, and we've talked to our town council about it, and the precedent, the state precedent, so our zoning bylaw is more restrictive than the state.
Yeah, okay.
So...
Than the law.
Yeah. So, and it, this is...
Nonconforming.
Yeah, this is something...
Our bylaw is nonconforming.
Everything.
This is something where previously they would've had to move it in to six feet.
Yeah.
So that just point one foot in, and then they'd have to, then we'd give them a special permit for the difference, if they, if it made sense for the project, but now we allow, allow it as is, because the...
So this is at 5.9, okay?
Because of the BAlta case.
So, this is going out like this, can't you see that little bend?
This only applies though to single and two-family nonconforming structures, anything else than that wouldn't be subject to the same, just like its sections.
Yeah.
He didn't, he didn't go straight through.
But it is, we, we had one case that kinda just brought all of this to light a few years ago, and we got this literature from town council that...
And I'll build along the five nine.
Explain all these protections that we didn't necessarily know existed beforehand, so...
Yeah, it's clever.
Yeah. I mean, it's nestled back there, it's fine.
All right, so, um...
Talk to your neighbors and...
What's that? Yeah, how, yeah, have you spoken to your neighbors, or have you shown them the plans?
Yeah, one of the abutters, we did, we talked to him, explained how, you know, the, the scenarios go.
Which one?
The one across the street, or the one on the side, on that wall.
Unfortunately, this, the person here, we rarely see them, been there for, you know, over a year, we saw them five times, and we told them that we were looking for an addition, but these specific plans, we haven't seen them since we put these plans on paper.
Okay, I mean, they've been notified.
The abutter that we...
They've been notified, nobody reached out to me.
Okay.
The abutter we see is, is directly behind us and not on the side that the...
Extension zone.
You know, in the, in the...
What's on the property line? Is there trees, a fence between you and...
There, there are shrubs and trees, and the property line, obviously we had it surveyed, so what exists there is not, some of its, some of the abutters kind of encroached on us like six inches or a foot, nothing to be, for me to be concerned about. The house, his home, is essentially side by side with the garage and extending back, so the addition that's being proposed doesn't even go as far back as his, his home goes a little further.
Yeah, he has a patio back there that, again, if, if we stayed in the buildable zone to get the square footage that we're looking for, at that point, we would be covering parts of his patio, this way we don't, we don't do that. And then to answer your question of what's there, is there's the, beyond the, the setback, there's the shrub stone wall, and then like a mulch area about five feet, and then there's a little bit of a side yard on their end.
Thank you. And are you taking down any trees to do this?
No.
All right, I can, I'll constitute the board as everyone but me. Do we have a motion for this? We have a lot of examples of this type of thing to write, so there's a, there's a pretty easy template.
I'm happy to deliver any templates or anything.
I'm happy to make the motion if somebody else wants to sign up for...
I had to write Tony's last time, so Tony should write.
You did?
Yeah.
She did. It was confusion, it wasn't your...
It wasn't your fault, but you're up.
I'll write this one.
All right, do you want me to make the motion? I'll make a motion for petition 2503, at 49 Deview Drive, to make a finding that the existing, the proposed work will not increase the nonconforming nature of the existing nonconformity, which is the 5.9 foot side yard setback. And that's really it, it's very simple with the...
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so you have your relief, that will be written up, and it's a, it's a finding rather than a special permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what do we, what should we do next, I guess?
So, the, that will be submitted within, how many days?
I'm sure we'll get it done soon, I'm gonna do the other, the first one tonight.
Yeah, and...
Send it over to Tony.
Marissa will, you'll contact them when it's...
Yeah, what happens is, well, the board will submit the decision, hopefully within the next, I would say by the end of next week, and then that has to stay with the town clerk for 20 days, that it runs through an appeal period, anybody can come forward and appeal the decision, and then at the end of that appeal period, provided nobody came forward, then it gets released to you, and it just has to get recorded at the registry of deeds, and then submit that to the building department, show that it's been recorded, and then you can pull your permit. can pull your permit.
So we should wait for all this before.
Yes.
Going to the building.
Yeah, because once, once the paperwork is filed by the board with us, then it is, the appeal period kicks in, and you can't do anything during that period, because anybody could come forward.
Be less than a month.
So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.